So it is 6:00 PM and I call to order the city council study session. Today is February 3rd, 2021, and I'm Mayor Julia Johnson. Let's begin with roll call. And I'm going to call as I see according to up on the screen here. So Councilman Carl DeYoung.
Present.
Councilman Brendan McGoughan.
Present.
Councilwoman Brenda Kinser.
Present.
Councilman Kevin Loy.
Present.
Councilman Glenn Allen.
Present.
Councilman Chuck Owen.
Present.
And Councilwoman Joellen Kestie.
Present.
Excellent. All right. Thank you, everyone. Just real quick, like before we begin, I want to make you aware of, I heard actually from Councilman McGoughan today. Thank you, Brendan, for sending the email and he had some really good questions. And so what I shared with him is that in April, we are looking at the possible dates of the first three weeks, somewhere in the first three weeks to do a council retreat. Just kind of waiting to see if we move into phase two, so that maybe we can gather together, so that we can start kind of defining what those, what those details will look like, what that will look like. As I stated, Councilman McGoughan has already brought to my attention something that he would really like to see addressed, and I think it's important, and we're going to do that. And so if there is something else that you would like placed on the agenda, if, you know, if it's not already there, we'll be happy to do that so that it can be discussed. One of the things that we will be going over is the council city goals and work plan. So if some time between now and then, you have a chance to look that over so that you can have input. You know, that would be fantastic. Other than that, I think we will move on to the comprehensive plan presentation. I'm going to turn it over to you, Director Mark Freiberger, and I want to thank you very much for the time and energy you put into putting this presentation together for us tonight. I think you're still on mute, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen now and make sure I can get up what we need to have here. Let's see, screen one. Okay. Can you all see the sewer comprehensive plan slide presentation there?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I'm going to go ahead and maximize this so it's a little easier to see. Okay. All right. So this sewer comprehensive plan is something that we do about every 10 years. The plans generally cover about a 10-year horizon. We were a little behind on this. The previous one was done in 2005. But as you know, we've been pretty busy actually building projects, and so we've been tracking pretty well with what we needed to do under the old plan. Okay, did that change to a second slide there? It shows up a little goofy on my screens. I have the dual screens, but can you see the slide called 2020 Comprehensive Plan Update Summary?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I'm just going to go through this somewhat quickly, and if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me as I go through this. This comprehensive sewer system plan is a compilation of results and findings of recent planning and engineering analysis completed for the city of Cedar Wally. The purpose of the analysis was to assess the ability of the existing sanitary sewer and treatment systems to accommodate wastewater flows and loading from the existing and projected population of the city. The plan updates and supersedes the city's 2005 comprehensive sewer system plan and has been prepared in accordance with all applicable statutes and guidelines. It has been prepared by PACE engineers with the financial analysis aspects of the plan being completed by Katie Isaacs and Associates, who has done our financial planning here for the last 14 years or so since I've been here. The plan incorporates the results of the recently completed wastewater treatment plant condition assessment and capacity analysis studies that were prepared by Brown and Caldwell. And the plant treatment and public works personnel were involved throughout this process. Basically, I'm going to run through this in line with the chapters of the plan, which starts with the planning data and moves on into the financial analysis and planned projects. Chapter two gives a little background on what our service area is. We have six square miles, including the urban growth area. The current services are approximately 3560 service connections. Most of those are in the city limits. We have a few out of city connections. Primary purpose of the plan, establish a program for future improvements to and expansion of the system. The planning period that we did for this was 20-year period, 2019 to 2038. The current population in 2019, when we began the plan, was 13,404 residents with 12,327 within, with sewer service. We have some lots in the city that do not have sewer and still on septic. The 20-year growth projection from the comprehensive plan is an increase to 16,814 persons by 2038. This map shows the two basic basins that we have in the city, and the light blue is the Third Street Metcalf area that takes in most of the area to the west of the city, and then the green area is the township street basin. We have trunk sewer lines and collectors in each of these systems that meet together at the wastewater treatment plant down on South Third Street. Just a few statistics, there's 46 miles of gravity sewer main. They're made up of polyvinyl chloride pipe, concrete pipe, clay, high-density polyethylene pipe, and cured-in-place pipe linings that we've done on quite a bit of our old concrete and clay sewer lines. There's 2.31 miles of force main. That's pumped lines. There's 0.68 miles of 24-inch ductile iron pipe outfall. That's the line that takes the treated wastewater after going through wastewater process and discharges to the Skagit River. And there's a total of 262,540 millennial feet or 49.7 miles of pipe altogether. We have 12 pump stations. There's 10 of those are major pump stations, and two of those are smaller, single-unit pump stations that are at our parks, one at Bingham and one at Hauser Playfield, the newest one. This graphic shows the layout of the sewer system and the location of the pump stations that I just mentioned. There are some highlighted lines there that show some of the planned improvements. We'll get more into that later. So now I'm going to talk a little about the collection system first, and then I'll move on to talk about the wastewater treatment plant system. We handle these both as part of the Fund 401 Sewer System, but they are managed somewhat separately. We have a separate dedicated crew that monitors the collection system, although it's all hands on deck when something goes wrong. And then we also have our wastewater treatment plant staff. Both of those divisions are headed by Kevin Nguyen, our superintendent. So the collection system from chapter six, our collection system analysis was prepared, including all the city's pump stations, trunk lines, that's all lines greater than six inches in diameter, and other collection facilities critical to the system or suspected of having capacity issues. The results of the analysis is in chapter six. Several areas were identified where pipe upgrades are required to correct deficiencies under existing flow conditions. That's basically lines that are undersized. Similar analysis was performed for future flow conditions, identifying additional areas of potential capacity problems. Inflow and infiltration INI was identified as a primary concern in the existing and future operation of the system. The plan actually recommends an aggressive INI program, including flow monitoring, pipeline video inspection, and smoke testing. We did some of that work back about 15 years ago, and that was included in the 2005 plan. And we did with our CIPP program, our lining program, and our replacement program over the last 14 years have addressed some of the more egregious problems we identified with the INI, but there's still, there's a fair amount in the system that we need to take another look at in the next decade. Other recommended collection system improvements include routine rehabilitation of pump stations. We are in the process of doing two of the stations now. In fact, we just finished upgrades to the Cook Road pump station. PumpTech, one of our contractors, did that work. And we put new pumps in and new discharge or base plates for the pumps, and we took a look at the electrical components, which are actually still in fairly good shape. But that particular pump station was 21 years old, and it's now updated and good for another 20 or so. With the next one is scheduled, and that was identified in this plan and our previous comp plan, is the the State Street pump station, and we'll be starting the bidding process on that in the next few weeks. Annual Pipeline Renewal and Replacement Program is a program that we go in and upgrade our various clay and concrete pipelines. Most of those are pushing 80 years old now, and they leak fairly bad in terms of groundwater. That's where the INI comes in. And also, we have some lines that are in danger of collapse. One of the things that keeps our collection system crew busy with is fixing lines when they do fail. We have one that we're looking at right now, as a matter of fact. And they fix those, and we do that either with our own crew when there are shallower lines. And if that's beyond our capacity, we have an on-call contractor that can do our deeper sewer digs with the proper safety measures. We have an ongoing grease program. Wally Hoyt from my office works with the various businesses in the city when we've identified grease issues or the need for grease traps or maintenance thereof. Wally keeps track of that for us. And we've also identified SCADA, that's Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition, if you're interested in that. And our telemetry system, that's kind of an ongoing program, and we have a an on-call or basically a consultant that we work with, Tesco Systems, that assists the city with the maintenance and improvements of that particular system. That system reports from our 10 major pump stations back to the wastewater treatment plant, and if you've visited down there, and if you haven't, by the way, I would invite you to schedule a time that you can do that, at least once COVID is cleared up, so that you can see how our system works. We have quite an extensive reporting system on the wall of the laboratory operations building on big screen monitors where the crew can see the condition of the various pump stations, as well as the components of the wastewater treatment plant itself as they operate. Pretty interesting stuff. Our capital system improvement plan is identified in chapter eight, and this talks a little bit about the projects that are ahead of us in the next decade. It's identified about $5 million in collection system improvements over that 10-year planning period. And again, this is just the pipelines. It discusses possible future funding options, including the Bond Public Works Trust Fund, which is a low-interest loan program that is set up by the state of Washington. Rate revenue, connection charges, our general facilities charges, developer financing, and existing budgeted funds that we use for that. Collection system improvements include rehabilitation, infill and expansion projects that are planned from 20 to 29. Rehabilitation projects include upgrade of existing concrete and clay pipe that is beyond its service life. And we have scheduled in our tenure plan about $3.4 million in projects for that purpose. This average is out about $340,000 a year, and that's funded strictly from rates. The rate revenue itself pays for that volume of projects on a yearly basis. We have some improvements planned this year for Ball Street, and we've been doing quite a few of these. We generally get those projects out every year, but sometimes we save up and do it with a combined two-year project. That is, it just doubles in size, but the rate impact is the same. Infill and infill, including filling in areas within the city that are currently on septic systems. Now, we've been trying to do that, and council's been very supportive of that effort. Our most recent one was over on the Rita Street area and also down on West Nelson and West Bennett. We did that over a two-year period and brought in another 22 services into the city at that time. That was a pretty big one. We have a number of areas, such as Carter Street, and a few other subdivisions that came in from the county that are still needing to be brought in, and we have some gaps in our existing system out on Cook Road and out on FNS Grade Road. That I'll be showing you a little bit more in a minute. But those projects are estimated at about a million six. We have not currently budgeted for too many of those. Those are generally done as we either have a need, like we're building a new road where that pushes up the need to do that, or some other driving factor like failures of the septic systems. So we have a number estimated for those, but they're not built into the sewer financial plan right now. Expansion projects include providing service to newly developed areas within the city and UGA expansion areas. These are typically developer-funded projects, but we have included in the CIP, our Capital Improvement Project, for expansions that are related to the roadway projects we have in our transportation improvement program. Jones John Liner Trail Corridor Project is the biggest example of that we have, and we've budgeted in $500,000 in expansion projects, just so when we build those new roads, we have the sewer replaced, and we don't have to dig those up again later on and do that. This is a hard-to-read map, but this shows the entire system. The lines that are in red are either expansion or the infill or the replacement or expansion projects shown here in red. For instance, you can see this one over from Cook Road up to FNS Grade Road. That is an expansion project that's related to the trail road extension part of the Jones John Liner Trail Road Corridor Project. We take advantage of the fact that development sometimes will build these for us, and for instance, here we have a project built into our system that has basically been completed for us this year. I didn't take that out of the plan because it was prepared in 2019, but that has come to fruition, and so this line is built. We are currently planning, as you know, for the section between Cook Road and FNS in association with a development that is coming our way pretty shortly. And so a portion of that will likely be built by the developer as well. So we take advantage of those wherever we can, and that does reduce our upfront costs that we have in our program. Okay, so I'll move on to chapter seven now. This is the wastewater treatment plant part of the system. Our wastewater treatment plant is responsible for treating all the flows generated by the city's sanitary sewer customers. Discharges, I mentioned earlier, to the Skagit River via a 24-inch outfall. The plant was originally constructed in 1956 with upgrades in 1973, 1994, and the most recent upgrades were in 1998. So the plant's right at 22 years old now this year, and we are starting to see the age in the system. 22 years doesn't sound like much, but for mechanical systems, for pumps and motors and basic equipment that runs 24 hours a day, that's a lifetime. And so we're actively looking at things that I'll be talking about more as I go on to do to keep that plant in good running order until we can build another plant. The wastewater treatment plant consistently operates within the city's National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit. And the permit number is shown there. Debbie Allen and now Kevin and the crew have done an excellent job of keeping that plant running, especially since we've had our hands tied behind our back partially on that plant since the 1998 upgrade on a couple of things I'll talk about in a minute. But the crew has been very innovative over the years and have consistently won awards from the Department of Ecology with the most recent one coming in just last month for not violating our discharge permit and producing clean water going out into the Skagit River. The plant is permitted for up to 2.07 million gallons per day in GD. That's maximum month average flow, and we also permitted for 7.18 million gallons per day of peak instantaneous flow. You don't need to memorize those numbers, obviously, but they are very important because our hydraulic capacity is based on those numbers. When we get flows coming in from our service area that exceed those numbers, we have to be planning to expand. In fact, we have to do that when we get to 85% of the flow numbers. The plant's also permitted for biological treatment by biological oxygen demand, what we call that BOD, and total suspended solids, TSS. We have limits for those things that our laboratory operations facility, that's the main purpose for that. We monitor our treated wastewater and the wastewater coming in to see if we're meeting our permit limits. The good news for us is that we consistently meet our biological treatment capacity limits, and basically what we are looking at in the future is our main constraint is going to be flow. This picture or slide shows the basic process for the treatment plant. You don't need to know too much about that, but if you do do a visit to the plant, this appears as one of the schematics in another version in better colors than this, and shows how wastewater comes into the plant into an inlet pump station. It goes through two screens, then it goes through a grit removal process, and it goes to a flow diversion box, which takes some of the flow to our oxidation ditch. That's the long racetrack-looking thing that the water is always churning in. And then it goes out of that into two clarifiers that the plant has. That's where the water is settled. And then it goes from there to UV disinfection, and after that, either by gravity or by an affluent pump station when it's needed to the Skagit River. We also, in the process of treating wastewater, you end up with a certain amount of bio solids. That's basically the leftover components of the bacteria that form the basis of wastewater treatment. After they have completed their life cycle, they come out as basically bio solids. And that material is, a part of that is used back in the beginning of the system to kind of keep the process going, and the rest of that we have to treat and dispose of. And so we have a set of devices down there, a belt filter press and a belt thickener that allows us to squeeze the water out of that, and then we have two tanks that are digesters that provides treatment for the bio solids to get it down to limits where it can be within what we haul off of the site, which is Class B bio solids. Class B bio solids are usable as fertilizer on non-human consuming crops like wheat fields in eastern Washington. Hours go to Boulder Park where their land applied over there to help with that process. So that's basically how we do it. You can also treat with additional treating capacity to Class A bio solids, which can be used land-applied for any basic purpose. So the wastewater treatment plant, our condition assessment that we did in 2016 recommended some mechanical and structural repairs and upgrades to extend the life of the existing facility. We've done part of those projects. We started in 2019 with some adding some pipes and raising one of the structures that during high-flow events was getting close to overflowing. Those have been successful projects. We haven't had those late-night calls out for the crew when we have these high-water events since we made those changes. Another thing that we found is we had some aeration limitations in our biological system that we did this last year by replacing the aeration diffusers in the two digester tanks. That was a successful process. We're in the process now of examining the results of that and getting that information off to Brown and Caldwell so we can see if we accomplished our goals of that. Looks like we're at least part of the way there, and part of it is still under scrutiny. Another project, which you heard me talk about quite a bit at the last council meeting, is the relocation of our Laboratory Operations Building. One of the things we found in our capacity assessment, a work that we did in 2016, and then our condition assessment that was done before is that our wastewater laboratory operations building is built on one of the process tanks. I didn't identify it on the plan there, but we have an anoxic tank that is underneath of the Lab Ops building. And that was a pretty bad idea when they first built it like that, because when it's in service, you have active wastewater, raw wastewater under the tank or under the building. The crew found out right after opening of the plant in 1999 that they had an odor problem that was just not tolerable. Now, again, due to the skill of our operators, they were able to figure out a way of bypassing that tank and leaving it dry, basically, and just operating directly to our oxidation ditch. They've been able to do that by cycling the ditch on and off to provide the treatment that they would have gotten out of the selector tank or the anoxic tank. So they've been able to do that here for 20 years, but we've really been challenged with the increasing flows as the flows from the city increase to be able to do that. And in fact, part of our condition assessment identified that we really needed to put that tank back in service in order to take advantage of our full flow capacity within the plant. We simply were not able to use all of our capacity, and we've had events, and they're getting more frequent, it does seem, for whatever reason, that have stretched us quite a little bit, and so having that tank back in services is a very necessary improvement, and to make that possible, of course, council has funded the Lab Ops Building relocation project that we talked about at the last council meeting. So that's basically the improvement projects that were based on the capacity assessment. There's one other one, too, that's a follow-on to the new aerators we put in the digester tanks, and that is upgrading the blowers for those tanks themselves. And that's a project that's in this capital facility plan coming up. Those are all projects that all they do is preserve the capacity of the plant under our existing permit. They allow nothing for growth, really. So I mentioned earlier, when we get to a certain portion of our flow or our biological treatment, we have to plan for an upgrade to the plant, and that limit is 85% of the design criteria for flow or and/or biological voting for three consecutive months, or when we would reach design capacity within five years. Per our capacity assessment that we've done, it appears that flow will govern rather than treatment. So our treatment process is adequate through our expected period of operation, but we are going to have to deal with flow sooner than than we will biological process. So the highest max month flow through 2016 was 1.46 million gallons a day, and that leaves about 0.6 million gallons a day for growth. And based on our growth, that still would give us somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 years of capacity in the plant. That was the reason, by the way, that I originally engaged Brown and Caldwell back in 2015 to start this process. I suspected we had more capacity in our plant than than 20 years, because we were about 17 years at the time, but I needed to have that verified, and it proved out that we do have that, but we did find all these other problems that I'd Proved out that we do have that, but we did find all these other problems that I mentioned to you. Now I do want to highlight though, that if growth continues at the, the higher pace that we're beginning to see. It could shorten us from that ten-year period too. I'll talk more about that in just a little bit. In twenty eighteen, the average February to April flow was one point four eight million gallons a day. With the highest recorded flow average, that was the highest recorded average flow since twenty ten. This remains still under our one point seven six limit. But we are watching that because when we get those, those high peak flows, if they happen three months in a row, that's another way that we are triggered on our. Facility planning process. So the capital improvements plan is in chapter eight of the sewer analysis. It identifies twenty three point one million dollars in wastewater treatment plan improvements over the ten-year planning period. That includes those catch-up projects I mentioned earlier. And then it includes actually a wastewater treatment plant upgrade within that period as well. The wastewater improvements include capacity, structural, mechanical and electrical projects. The types of projects, we have eight capacity projects identified between twenty and twenty-nine, including a major upgrade plan for twenty twenty-seven. Those amount to about twenty-two million dollars of the total. Three mechanical projects identified between twenty and twenty-nine to replace equipment that's beyond its service life. Mostly pumps and motors, three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And we have three structural projects planned to deal with some minor issues on our tanks. Some of those structures down there, by the way, are pushing forty years old, in fact, slightly over that. And so they're still in pretty good shape, but they've got some cracks and some sealant issues and relatively minor and we're planning to deal with those over the next couple of years. And we have four electrical projects planned to upgrade the electrical system for deficiencies identified in our ongoing condition assessments. And this, this does include the project that we have already bid and plan to construct here and starting in March or April. To deal with those national electric code issues that were identified in the capacity assessment. Okay, so chapter nine is the financial plan. You have seen this before. The financial plan that we did for this sewer study or sewer comprehensive plan. Was done by Katie Isaacson and basically that was used as the basis for our annual upgrade. Or annual review of our wastewater or a sewer program. And based on that, we recommended that we stay the course with our annual rate increases for inflation. And also we made recommendations to increase the general facilities charge. Based on that to fund the growth component of the wastewater treatment plant expansion. So our financial plan summarizes the sewer utility financial history. It identifies funding sources. It provides a plan for funding recommended capital improvements. Provides a ten-year financial plan with the impact on rates identified. The recommendations from the plan are, as I mentioned already, to continue to increase general facilities charges periodically. Or review them annually and periodically and increase them. For the consumer price index for inflation. Do that on an annual basis. Continue to increase sewer rates annually for the consumer price index for inflation. And it anticipates significant borrowing for designing construction of the plan twenty twenty-seven wastewater treatment plan expansion. And it recommends monitoring the rate outlook annually, as I mentioned earlier. During the budget process and adjusting as needed to support operations, maintenance and the capital improvement program. So that's basically my presentation tonight. And I know that was kind of overwhelming, but again, you've heard aspects of this, such as the financial plant plan a number of times over the years. I noticed tonight that I hadn't posted the plan yet, but I will do that tomorrow. I'll have Julie post that. That'll be. Viewable under the engineering capital improvements project, program. Part of the website, if you'd like to look into the general sewer system plan in any more detail than what I gave you tonight. And I'm of, of course, always open for questions on, on this or any other matter related to the engineering part of the city. So if you have any questions, be glad to try to answer them now.
So are there any questions for Mr. Freiberger?
I've got one, Mark. This is Chuck. We all know what the, the purpose of the pumping stations are. But I would like to know, do those stations, those pumps run continuously? Or did they go on and off whenever they're needed? And what kind of a maintenance schedule is required to keep those pumps operating?
Yeah, so for operations, they're ran by floats and as the flows come in and as the, they're, each of those has a wet well. That's between four foot and seven foot diameter. They have a certain amount of capacity before the pumps kick on. They have floats at both high level and low level and so they don't, they do not run continuously. They will run for several hours a day, but they're on and off. So that was the first part of it and maintenance schedule is we basically, as I mentioned earlier, our SCADA system. Allows us to view the, the runtime, any alarms that come in off the pumps. If something gets plugged. We can see that at the plant and the operators that monitor that can send the collections crew out to do. A check if they need to in between their normal visits, but they do visit the, the pump stations basically on a, a rotating basis. Each week, so they get looked at all the time. They have to get inside, not physically, but open the hatch and look down in to see if they have any problems with things like rag buildup. One of the impacts of living in the age we do is we're using a lot of new types of fibrous cloth in our cleaning. And most people don't seem to realize it, but those things are not flushable. They do clog up pumps and they do clog up our screens down at the wastewater plant. So. Part of our ongoing efforts is to educate the public that please don't flush down, down the, the sewer system things that are not. Biodegradable. They do cause problems for us. So that's, that's how we do that, Chuck.
All right. Thank you, Mark.
And I see where Councilman Lloyd also has a question.
Yeah, Mark, when I was, I don't remember if I was on the planning commission or the city council, but Isaacson did a study. At least ten years ago, maybe fifteen years ago. And at that time said that we had adequate income and we could build up our sewer reserve or sewer fund. And I was just wondering how accurate was her projections from ten years ago to, because it was, the, the final date was twenty twenty, I think. So how accurate were her predictions in the last ten years?
She's been doing pretty well. Of course, I've been involved in all that time too. So. A lot of what she gives us is, is based on the data we give her. So if we give her good data, then she generally gives us a pretty good recommendation. We, since at least that period in time, we've been recommend, recommending annual reviews. We don't do it every single year, but we have been the last few that I mentioned before to make sure that the rate revenue. Is producing adequate funding for operations and maintenance and that our general facilities charges are producing. Money that will allow for the plant expansion that I've mentioned. Both of those are absolutely key elements. And council's been very, very supportive of making sure the utility stays solvent and is ready for the growth that we're, we're experiencing.
How much is currently in the sewer fund?
Oh, Doug could probably tell you better than I, but we have several million dollars built up. We are going to use about a million dollars of that amount. For these short-term projects. The lab ops building is a big one that we're going to fund. I didn't mention that before, but you heard me talk about it earlier when we were talking about rates. That we have, this plan is to not borrow any money. Until we absolutely have to. And in order to do that, we'll use some of our built-up funds to fund the shorter-term projects, including the. Largest one being the lab ops building relocation, which is estimated at a one point six million dollars. That one, I, I did get the permit level plans on that part of that project. Last week, I haven't looked at them yet and I haven't seen their estimate, but I should be seeing that in the next few days. And then I'll be talking to you about how we did with our preliminary estimate on that. Again, what they estimated starting this project was just based on basically average square foot costs. And as you know, we've seen a fair amount of inflation on that and our going in price was pre-COVID nineteen effects. So I, I do expect we'll see some surprises with that. We have a, a certain amount of capacity within. The reserves that we have built up to, to manage that. And I'll be careful to bring that proposal to you when we see it. Hopefully we'll get a pleasant surprise, but I, I just don't know. Yet on that. So the shorter-term projects, we're all funding with basically rate revenue in our reserves. Then what that does is it allows us to continue. Under that program of just annual increases by the consumer price index. So no major increases, no major bumps. Until we get to the time that the Public Works Trust Fund loan that we have for the. Major system improvements, the collection system improvements we did back in two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine. That gets paid off and that's going to reduce our annual debt service, which is also covered by rates. By an amount that's roughly equivalent to what our new debt service is looking to be for a new plant. So what that means is because of council's foresight. We won't have to have a major increase in the rates when we get to the time we need to finance the new facility. That's the plan anyway, and we're, we're sticking with it. So.
When's that going to be paid off?
Part of the loan would be paid off in twenty twenty-five and twenty-six. I think the last payment's twenty twenty-six, isn't it Doug?
So it's just around the corner.
Yeah, it's coming up pretty soon.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's, that's, that's one of the, the basic principles that we've been trying to do here. Over the years is, is to avoid. Taking on that until we paid off the existing stuff. You know, there, there's no way we can build a twenty million dollar plant. With rate revenue, that's just not in the cards. But the, the loan programs that are available are pretty low interest and so. We can do that and crank that in and Katie has included that additional debt service. In the, in the financial plan for the years twenty twenty-seven and out. And by the way, that's viewable in the financial section of this sewer comprehensive plan. So you can see how that, that kind of works.
Well, you know, it seems to me like the information that you're giving us kind of makes the information from ten or fifteen years ago, it sounds like they were pretty accurate. So I would say they probably did a pretty good job.
I think so, you know, not to pat myself on the back, but we've been thinking about this for a long time and Katie has been. That, keeping us honest on how we're doing all of this. I, I've been, because I come from a small agency and we're still a small agency. I know the impact on the rate payers of, of, when you, when you bring the surprise to them, hey, I've got to increase the rates fifty percent this year. We ran into that over Colville. My, my predecessor there had set the stage for that, but then it was actually implemented during my early years over there. We saw rates go from eight dollars and sixty-five cents a month, if you can believe that. Up to about sixty over the period of, you know, ten years there and, and they've continued to increase them. And we built a brand-new treatment plant there. From scratch, basically. Ours is going to be using some, some significant components of our existing facility. So that plant was eighteen million dollars. We're thinking we can build an upgrade to ours in the twenty-some million dollar range. So that's actually a pretty good bargain for us. For being able to use the existing oxidation ditch and the two clarifiers we already have. So anyway, we're trying to do all of this as economically as we can and yet continue to have an excellent treatment system. To meet the requirements of the permit.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Freiberger?
Yeah, Mayor Julia. Just a couple real quick questions and I understand the problem with collapsing pipes that are concrete and clay. Mark, how much, how many miles are we getting down to on that, you know?
Um, let's see if I can tell you the answer to that.
Or kind of, are, are we ending the collapse of all?
You know, we, we've taken care of the major issues that way. We probably have, let me find a, a map that shows the system. So in the older part of the city, which is south of highway twenty and east of Third Street. That's where the predominance of our clay and mostly concrete pipes are at. We have probably lined about twenty to twenty-five percent of those pipes. We have done most of the major lines. Have been done. So mostly it's neighborhood collectors now. And we have in that, I think I told you about a million six in collection system projects. We have in that to do another scad of those over the next ten years. And we should be fine as long as we stay the course on that. I don't anticipate any major collapses. In that system, but if, if they do happen, we will deal with them.
It is kind of, kind of a Band-Aid approach right now on, on.
Well, actually the C I P P is a permanent replacement of the pipe. You, you, you put a. A liner inside of the pipe that actually has the same structural strength and, and actually a little better capacity than the old pipe did because it had. Leaking, high friction joints in it. That's new stuff is slick. So you get a better, better flow rate in those. So they, they actually work very well. And we've used that significantly here in town and will continue to do so with the lines that we can. Some of them are not really suitable for that. For instance, Ball Street that we were talking about. We have a set of five laterals off of Ball Street itself. We, we have already lined Ball Street, did that a few years ago. But the laterals are actually city responsibility there. They were built without easements. Or overt easements. We have a basically what you would call a implied easement on those. And they're, they're pretty hard to maintain because they have fences and buildings built on them. And so we're going to attempt to line some of them and dig some of them up and it just varies. We had one repair we had to do late last year on the Seidel property down off of Ferry. Where we had one of those hundred and sixty-foot. Douglas fir trees that had started growing into the pipe there. We took the tree down and worked with the Seidl's on that and took the tree down and then repaired the line. Because we would, we dug through the roots to make the repair and we would have killed the tree. So that was kind of a trade-off. So those are the kind of things we face on, on those lines. Those are the tough ones. We've, we've probably done the easier ones. Now we're getting into the tougher ones where some of them we just have to go in and dig them up.
Well, I'm glad you have your job and I don't and thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm glad Kevin has his and then the collection system guys are the ones that actually dig them up. I've been down in some of those deep trenches earlier in my career and I prefer to be up above.
Hi, anyone else? Um, so Mark, I, I have a question. I'm wondering about, you were talking about in chapter seven, the flow. And anticipating with the growth that's happening, how that flow is going to increase, of course. I'm curious about any industry or commercial businesses that may come into the area. Is that? Calculated into that as well or would that be over and above what we're looking at?
Well, the way we plan for these things is basically based on population. If there was a major flow generating business that came in, we'd have to look carefully at that. As I mentioned, we have about point six M G D of capacity. And that's quite a bit. So it would, it would, we certainly could manage a reasonable business. The things we have to be careful about, and you've heard Debbie say this in the past. And Kevin will, Kevin will be beating this drum too. If you got a fish processing plant that came in that produces a lot of. Biological oxygen demand, that's something we'd have to be very careful about on that. We have adequate capacity for that, but it's still, that's the challenges you have to be careful about and especially in the way. You can eat up a lot of capacity with something like that in a hurry. But just businesses themselves typically use less wastewater capacity than. But just businesses themselves typically use less wastewater capacity than than residential. We allow about seventy five gallons per person per day for flow for our human population and thirty five gallons per day for commercial. Industrial can be more. But again, in these days, most industries are required to have pretreatment and they pretty much need to take care of the the worst part of that before we get the flow. And I would mention, too, I mentioned growth could change our calculations significantly, and that's the reason we do the annual looks at this. John Coleman and I sat down together this morning and talked about what we're facing in terms of growth. I we have a meeting planned for the utility committee for the tenth. And one of the things we want to talk about is one of our developers has asked us to look at our general facilities charge system. The way we calculate general facilities charges is based on a residential unit, a single family, which is equivalent to about one point six persons, excuse me, two point six people is what that's equivalent to. Two point five nine, exactly. And what we're looking at, and that's been that's been mostly the growth we've seen over the years. We've had a few apartments come in like BYK's units over off of south of State Street there by the library. But those have been more rare. It's been more single family duplex, triplex. Under our current system, it doesn't matter what the unit is, if it's a single family duplex, triplex or multifamily. They all pay the same general facilities charge, which is currently eighty four hundred ninety five dollars per unit. Our sister agencies in the area do that in a lot of different ways with many of them doing it on the basis of a reduced general facilities charge for multifamily. And the theory is that generally you have less population density in multifamily. In fact, procedural woolly, the figure we get from the OFM is about one point nine six persons per unit as opposed to the two point five nine we have for the average of the city, a single family. So that all equates to less flow. And so there's there is an argument for having a smaller general facilities charge related to multifamily units. So we're looking at that, and we'll be talking about that on the tenth, and then that'll come back to the council in large. It's it's a a question that's fraught with a lot of consequences, and we need to be careful about it because if you start reducing that, it reduces the amount of funds you have come in that pay for growth. And of course, multifamily causes growth really quick. And I mentioned that we had put our heads together on what we're facing, and we have already permitted three multifamily projects in late twenty twenty and early twenty twenty one that haven't started yet. And those add up to a hundred and sixty seven units by themselves. There's another seventy some beyond that that are talking about getting their permits in this year. So it's a total of of two hundred and thirty nine units could just in multifamily, and they'll be the ongoing single family. We know, for instance, Garden Meadows still has another thirty so or so units to build out there, and they're building as quick as they can. They're probably down to twenty now. And then we have the new development between FNS and Jones Road that has twenty seven or so units. So there's going to be some single family coming in, too. In our sewer financial plan, we've been using an average of seventy five connections a year for the years twenty twenty to twenty twenty four, which is three hundred units. And then for the rest of the period, we use fifty a year. And the total for the ten year period is six hundred. So we're looking at eating up roughly a third of that possibly in the next two years. But as we all know, the economy is cyclical. When it goes up, it generally comes down. So I'm feeling like the average is still okay, but that's something we need to look at on an annual basis and just see where we're at. So for instance, in twenty twenty, we had that in our financial plan at seventy five connections. Our actual was fifty one. So we were under. We were ninety six in twenty nineteen, so the average between them was a little less than a hundred and fifty, which is in track with our seventy five a year number. So anyway, that's the that's the, you know, card tossing you do as you do these planning things, and we just have to keep an eye on it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if not, Mark, thank you again for putting this together, bringing information that's really important and making us aware of what we need to be thinking about and looking at as we grow over the next couple of years and anticipating the the building of a new sewer plant, which I believe, did you say that's going to, is that going to be in twenty twenty six, twenty seven? There we'll be looking at it then?
Yes, Mike, we have in the capital plan that is in this sewer system plan twenty twenty six to be designing it and building it in twenty twenty seven. Kind of split between the two years there. Now, as I mentioned, that's less than ten years, and and it's possible based on flow, we may not get there that quickly. But again, since we're growing faster right now than than anticipated, that's probably as good a guess as any on when it is. I hope it's not any sooner than that, although if it is, we will have the general facilities charges coming in faster than we're anticipating, too. So you know, if we do have a hundred and sixty to two hundred units coming in, we're going to be three times the allowance that we have in there for general facilities charges. So it kind of balances out. It's just one of those things we need to manage.
Okay, thank you again. Thank you, everyone, for being at the meeting. And if there is nothing for the good of the order, we are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night.